Good morning. The committee in the whole is called to order. We will resume where we were at yesterday. We're at AP 121, TMB L 23, page P 14. If everybody's on track. Madam Vice, does anyone would like to speak to this amendment? Because I know it was spoken yesterday. Speaker, you had the floor on that one. You were questioning that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, page 14, line 23, to amend the bill to read, "to be inclusive of the existing Guam Memorial Hospital Authority facility throughout the duration of the construction of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence and then the inclusion and until the opening of the new facilities." This amendment, Mr. Chair, clarifies the duration of the maintenance of the current GMH facility. We understand that construction and opening of the new hospital are not necessarily the same, and the current hospital needs to be utilized until they can move into the new hospital. So that was the justification for this amendment.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Speaker. And the Speaker, if I'm correct, you were questioning that because of there's another section, another page separate that talks about the maintenance, and you felt that there may be a conflict because it doesn't exist. As I spoke to Ms. Menjola Gida this morning, she said, "There won't be any conflict because it's a finance bill. When they do kick out the RFP, they will make sure that it's included, that they make sure that the maintenance is consistent with what we've been talking about from the public hearing, that it will include the maintenance of the current building until the new building is done." And if you want that in writing, I can get that in writing. But I just want to make sure we cover that.
Right. I think if we leave this, or if I could speak on the amendment.
Yes, please.
Yeah. If we leave this language in the bill, I'm proposing an amendment later to strike it. But if we leave this language in the bill, we are financing with 5% interest the maintenance on the current hospital as opposed to financing maintenance on the new facilities, which is going to be under a leaseback, which is, you know, how we have financed the maintenance of JFK, Ukudu. We financed the new structure's maintenance. And, you know, maybe that makes sense. That's why we were asking questions about how much we are really going to be paying for finance, 12 million, I mean, for maintenance, 12 million a year. Yeah. So anyways, I just don't, we've got a, you know, existing healthcare facility. They're supposed to be budgeting and taking care of their maintenance right now. And I, yeah, I just think financing that facility while we're building this other one is totally different than the intent of the bill. I mean, it's really putting us in a unique situation where the contractor's going to come in and do maintenance on a building that they don't own as opposed to this structure that you, you know, in your bill is that they own this. That's why we're requiring them to maintain it. But anyways.
All right.
As to the amendment, to add the words, "until the opening of the new facilities," I have no objection if that's going to read that they're going to continue capital maintenance and repair of the First Century Healthcare Center of Excellence facilities until the opening of the new facilities. That, that's fine. So I guess I'll get to my own amendment later, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does anyone else, any of my colleague, like to speak to the amendment? Because she will be introducing a separate amendment to possibly strike it. And I will contact Gida. So hopefully by the time we get to that, we'll know exactly how they feel about it. Senator Brown.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, because, I mean, if we're talking about, I should, we should address this amendment as it is, and then address, the Speaker has one, address it as well. Because, I mean, I would have a concern if we actually are having this company do maintenance on the existing Guam Memorial Hospital, we're financing that through a bond versus investing in the new facility. I just think that should be separated. You know, and then, of course, I'm going to be wanting to know what more maintenance. I'm assuming that ongoing maintenance at GMH will be to sustain it for the time and duration we need it to still be in operation. But, you know, to finance that through this process on something that we're going to, you know, remove as being the major healthcare facility on Guam, and we're financing it over a long-term period, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If we're going to finance, I'd rather invest it in the new facility and put those funds moving forward into the new facility. There's no reason right now, you know, even if this bill didn't exist, that we shouldn't be looking at separate construction management or maintenance of GMH rather than financing it. I mean, these are very expensive dollars, my dear colleagues. I mean, most of us will not even be alive, if any of us will be alive, at the conclusion of this bond or this whole financing process if it moves forward. I think we need to be very careful how we use the process of either this public-private partnership, because while it sounds very nice, we're going to, you know, the people of Guam are going to be paying a very pretty penny for it. And certainly wonderful if we're able to use federal funds, grant funds collectively to add to this. But the bulk, the bulk of the cost of this construction is going to literally fall on the shoulders of our own people. So I just think we should be financially responsible, because I don't even know if we're going to be able to pay for all of this to begin with. We don't even know with the presentation, Mr. Chair, that was made to us by Gida and the other key department and agency's here for public health and behavioral health, whether or not we can shoulder all the costs, because we don't know whether our economy's still going to maintain where we, I mean, we know for now, once the federal funds start slowing down, I think we're going to start seeing a downward trend. That just makes all the most rational sense. And certainly, it's going to take a little more time for our economy to even get back to where we were in January of last year. So I just think we shouldn't be throwing everything into the basket. I think we should very much separate the construction of the new facility, the resources that we're financing, invested in the new facility, and they can pursue a separate contract to finance, or not finance, but just address the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance that's needed at GMH to keep it operational until, you know, the new facility's constructed, and then, of course, our healthcare resources are transferred to the new facility. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Just for, just for a little bit of information for everyone, the only reason why it was included in the bill, because of the problems we've been having to try to get the building maintained. So we wanted to make sure that when the new building's going to be built, we keep the current hospital afloat. That's the only reason. But I have, I have no objection to what you said, Senator Brown. I kind of agree to that to a certain extent. Senator Telo, and then Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues. I share the same sentiments of the last two speakers. Mr. Chair, I've been attending the task force meetings that's been going on, and there is nothing in, I don't recall at all that the conversation about having to maintain the current building right now, I mean, we deal with that every year when it comes to budget, when they come before us, before this body, to address their concerns or needs in the upcoming fiscal year. And that is addressed. I believe, Mr. Chair, what we're doing is we're almost changing this bill to a point where it needs to have another public hearing. If we start dabbling in this, in this bill and changing it substantially to take it off course, then it does warrant another public hearing. So, Mr. Chair, like I said, during my task force meetings, I don't think I've ever heard them talk about, you know, incorporating maintenance into this bill that's in front of us today, 121. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Senator Duñez, you wanted to speak?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes. Yes, okay.
In the interest of time, I'm just going to move to withdraw this amendment right now.
All right. The motion is to withdraw the amendment. Are there any objection? There being none, amendment is withdrawn. We will now proceed to the next. Let's see.
Sabina.
Standby, folks. The next amendment, if I'm correct, is... Okay. No, no, we're going down the list of everybody as it was turned in. Okay, and that would be AB 121, let's see, SFP, L 16, 18, P 15. So in other words, from line 16 to 18, page 15. Senator Perez.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been stated that this bill is a financing bill, but it's hard not to miss that a big part of it is procurement. And in fact, I could see the JFK bill in this, as it used as a template. But what the JFK bill did not include was this clause, repealing clause, where it repeals all laws inconsistent with the provisions of this bill, that any law that's inconsistent is hereby repealed and amended accordingly. So during the panel, I asked the question, what was the purpose? I mean, was there any contemplation that this bill would, would actually be inconsistent with other parts of the laws? And I didn't get a clear answer. And as such, I think that it's important that if we don't know the true impacts or repercussions of something like this, if we're repealing something, we don't know which part we're repealing, first of all, and what impact that would have to the rest of government. I think it's important to play it safe and just, just strike this, this section altogether, unless I can get, we can get a clear understanding of which laws are being repealed. And how, the other question is, how is it going to be amended? And, you know, being that this bill too has, can perhaps outlive this current legislature, the fact that one legislature cannot bind another. I mean, I think there's too many questions to really accept this section of the, of the bill. And I believe it opens it up to more abuse and potential abuse, which I don't agree with. And I hope my colleagues also see the flaw in this, in this section as well. Yeah, being that, you know, a lot of us are promoting transparency and accountability, I think this clause goes in the opposite direction. And I do, I think that, yeah, just to play it on the safe side, especially if we're, we're investing so much money into this project, we want to be able to, you know, have sure footing when it comes to protecting our investment. So I ask the support of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Does any of my colleague would like to speak on that amendment? Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I rise in full support of this amendment to repeal the line in the bill that says that all laws or parts of any laws that is inconsistent with this bill are hereby repealed and amended accordingly. I don't believe this is at all suitable to amend our laws, you know, by, by like blanket. And I agree with the sponsor of the amendment that we would be blindly, you know, saying, you don't have to follow any of the existing laws. I think that includes procurement law. I think it includes transparency laws. And unfortunately, this is one of the bigger projects that the government of Guam is going to, you know, undertake in the next few years, maybe 10 years, and it's going to place a huge burden on the people of Guam. We're tying up a lot of money that could otherwise go to equipment or services. And I think the more money that we're spending, the more scrutiny, and not the less that, that the project should undergo. We can't close our eyes, I think, and say, "Do whatever you want to get this done." It sounds tempting, but I just say, "No, we can't do that. We have to say, 'No,' you know, keep it open and make sure that we, we are bringing all the people along, that that's, you know, their money that's going to be spent on this. So let's, let's make sure that, you know, we get, we get the best product possible." I don't want to be looking at another deal like we look at sometimes in our budget. We look at leases that we can't get out of. We look at T-10, you know, we say, "Hey, could we have got a better deal?" You know what I mean? I say, "Keep it open, make sure that we're following all the laws." And in fact, yeah, I'm advocating more scrutiny because of the huge amounts of money that we're going to be allocating straight off the bat for this project that are, you know, going to be borne in the end by taxpayers. This is money that could be spent on, on tax refunds, it could be spent on equipment, it could be spent on other services, and we're giving up a lot of that if we're going to allocate it all to this and, and not follow any laws. So I support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Does any other colleague would like to speak on this amendment? Senator Brown.
I'll make it short, Mr. Chairman. I also support this amendment for all the reasons that the previous two speakers have relayed. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking, I'm just making sure I check, I look at everyone. Does anyone else like to speak to this amendment? No one? Do we have an objection to this amendment? We have one objection. All in favor of this amendment? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. We would not have enough. Amendment fails. Okay, you want to ask to reconsider the...
Please reconsider. I thought, I am in favor. I thought...
Okay, so let's take one more vote.
Mr. Chair, roll call, please.
We're going to, we're going to do a reconsider.
A roll call, yeah.
Okay, you want a roll call, and who voted for it?
My second roll call.
You, you may have enough votes already, but okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's one objection. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Madam Vice Speaker.
Objection withdrawn. Objection withdrawn, please.
Withdrawn? Okay. I'm going to ask the question, on this amendment, are there any objection to this amendment? There being none, amendment passes. Roll call not, not needed. Thank you. Let's move to the next one. The next one is, standby, folks. We will now move to AB 121. I think that would be TMB, L 21?
No, CMD.
Yeah. TMB, L 21, P 6?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that this was incorporated in the amendment to the amendment, so I withdraw this amendment.
Oh, okay. All right.
So you can go to the next one.
So let's go to the next one.
Yeah.
It'll be L 15, dash 19. I think that was done already. Okay. Okay, we're up to L 7 to 18, P 7. Okay, it's AB 121, TMB, L 7, dash 18, P 7. Looks like this is more the definition part. But Madam Vice?
One moment, Mr. Chair. Just looking for the justification on this one.
This is more in the definition section. Let's, this, we'll get a recess so we can make sure we get the right amendment on.
We are now on, if you look at, everyone has a hard copy sheet with the list of amendments, and the list is 1 through 25. We're now on number seven. It's AB 121. Originally, it was introduced, going to be introduced by a vice speaker. However, I believe Senator Sinagastin will be proffering this amendment. This will amend lines 7 through 18, page 7. And again, it is number seven on your hard copy list, AB 121.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. And my colleagues, just, just advise you, there's going to be several amendments that are being identified that is introduced by Senator, by vice speaker, but it originated from me, but it was coordinated from Gida. Now, on this amendment, this specific amendment, all it does is it adds a new F and then renumbers the rest on the bill. So you'll find on page 7, line 7 to 18, "F is now moved down," and then the new F says, "Healthcare facilities shall mean the facilities of Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center." This is all part of the definition. That's all it is. Gida wanted to make sure that it was added, and then we just renumbered or relettered the rest of the definition, nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Would anyone, anyone like to speak on this amendment? Vice Speaker?
Mr. Chair, real short, just support the efforts so that it, it clearly states that the healthcare facilities will be inclusive of all the healthcare facilities here at GMH, public health, behavioral, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. So it just gives a clearer definition. So I support the efforts.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator... Senator Blas?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't know if we're reading the same bill, but if this amendment were to pass in the bill that I have before me, healthcare agencies, oh, okay. So we're just adding now, E was healthcare agencies and F is healthcare facilities. Just to be clear.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know this particular amendment simply is adding on the word, you know, between F and G with regards to having their, you know, healthcare facilities identified. But I do want to point out, and even in listening to the presentation of the panel, I understand that this bill is essentially trying to put forth this facility that would include GMH, Public Health and Behavioral Health. But I did get the impression with regards to presentation made that enough review has been done to determine whether or not that this is ideally what we should do in moving forward because we are at definitions. I myself am not necessarily inclined to want to see all these facilities put in place in terms of the ultimate cost to construct them. I don't think it's been clearly presented to us or the people of Guam whether or not this is the most cost-efficient way to do it. I understand the desire of wanting to put all these things together. I mean, it sounds good. It looks good. I mean, the title itself, who doesn't want to be excellent? But is this something that is affordable? Certainly in the case of the public health facility, which I remember when that public health facility was first built, I remember as an elementary student going up there for tours and visits and getting dental care at that facility. And I think we understand certainly that with the damage that happened with the fire, that there's a need to rebuild a new public health facility. But do I, I don't necessarily believe that needs to be included in this so-called campus. And I'm wondering how much more this is going to drive up the cost versus if the existing location can be demolished and built there? If there's another government property where public health can be constructed? And I bring this up, Mr. Chair, because this whole issue that we've come to be aware of and in our experience within this pandemic, everyone's bragging about, isn't this wonderful that we have modern technology where we have an ability to communicate instantaneously that does not necessarily require us to physically be in the same place at the same time? And yet, a presentation's being made to our people that, oh, in order to really facilitate healthcare, public health, behavioral health, we all need to be included in this one big campus that we have yet to determine where the location of that campus is going to be. And while the discussion has been on Eagle Field, we obviously know there's going to be controversy with regards to that, and that was evident during the public hearing with the presence of descendants of original landowners that were there, including a land, you know, a landowner that is still here among us, raising the concern that if the military is going to turn this property over, then why aren't they turning over and why wouldn't the government support turning this property over to the original landowners? So that in and of itself is not a clear-cut issue. I think it's going to be very controversial with regards to that. And then the issue of behavioral health. You know, the director mentioned that the building is 20 years old. We probably have socks that are 20 years old or older at our age. But I don't think that's a reason that we have to build a new facility. I mean, we all want to have a lot of things, but can we afford it in this financially? This is the best way to proceed because we are putting into a process of financing costs that is going to be substantial. And as I mentioned, if we proceed with this, this is probably the single largest construction project and bond financing, if we do the bond financing, or even this public-private part, whatever the case may be, in having this lease-back-to-own process that's ever been undertaken in the history of the government of Guam. It's going to tie this amount of money up beyond the lifetime of probably everybody in this room. The only one here is going to be able to say otherwise is if anybody here's, you know, surviving to, well, maybe Senator Amanda will be here. Maybe, and maybe you, Clint. Well, you're being optimistic. But for the majority of us, the majority, I can say for the majority of us that are here, we're not going to be around by the time this process gets paid off. So more the reason probably I'm a little more cautious, you know, in wanting to buy the most expensive car on the lot. And by definition, we're essentially saying that we concur collectively in putting all these three facilities together. The behavioral health building, I mean, if they need additional space, they can either build a parking structure and build on top of that, or they can have a portion of it at another property. I think the fact that we're looking at moving out of entire buildings that are still structurally sound and can provide the services that are needed because we want to consolidate it, we want this to be our legacy, I don't think that's a good enough reason to burden our taxpayers on this issue. And we have not seen any presentations made. I don't know, I'm assuming the committee may be looking at it, but I certainly didn't see that being provided to us here on what's the plus and minuses of building a new facility collectively or keeping them at their current locations and rebuilding it at their current locations. As I mentioned, the thing I'm certainly supportive and I understand is the Guam Memorial Hospital, building a new hospital, modern hospital that can meet the needs of our people now and many years into the future. As I mentioned, I saw the change with regards to the old naval hospital and the construction of the new hospital there. But I'm not really at this point convinced that this is the ultimate solution is to consolidate, especially when we still have no idea, Mr. Chair, what this is really going to cost us. We're kind of like moving along and we're estimating, oh, we're going to put up $35 million annually, but we really don't know what the cost is going to be. And then what? We're going to extend it? We said we're going to extend it now for instead of 30, we're going to finance it to 40 years. But we don't even know what can be constructed at this point for that amount of money. Are we going to extend the financing to 50 years? By then, they'll be talking about building a new building again. I just think there's so many unknowns with what has been presented here that doesn't, as I mentioned, I always look for comfort level. And I just have an objection to the definition being included that all these three facilities have to be consolidated in one location because we don't have enough, at least from my perspective, we don't have enough information before us that tells us and certainly tells our people that this is the best solution, especially in the case of behavioral health where I feel we have a facility that can still accommodate the needs that are there. And certainly, if they need additional space, there are options that can still be pursued on that property to accommodate that without an extraordinary long-term financing cost that our people are expected to be burdened with. So with that, even though I understand it's just the definitions in this process, the definitions define how these categories are recognized in this bill. I simply would have to object to it. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Duñez, did you still have? You're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, and I concur with several of the observations of the previous speaker. One of the reasons why, when I was asking the panel when they first appeared, and once again, I do agree that the, I think the nicest building in the inventory of government of Guam right now is the Behavior and Wellness Center. But the main reason why I wanted to speak on it is also when I was asking the panel the vision of the locations, and Epa Point Oka was put back on for consideration. And at the outset, I understand the intent and the desires behind this bill in terms of understanding our healthcare and what it means to our people and facilities being important. But I continue to believe that is the hospital that maintains at the forefront. And by adopting this amendment and by having the language in law that it has to be co-located in one location, I think basically is more restrictive to this financing component than it is helpful. And I do agree with the previous speaker also on another amendment that, you know, because of the time involved in a procurement such as this, even just the hospital itself, we saw what happened with GPA recently and how many years that's taken. And that's a power plant. It's, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to downgrade the significance of it, but it's a lot more basic and it's intricacies of power production as opposed to a hospital with all the specialties and everything else that go into what a hospital does. So I also have difficulty with the way the language reads here. And if anything, at a minimum, what I'd like to see is the exclusion of, as a whole, in one property of the government of Guam. Sisus Massey, or Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Anyone else on this amendment? Senator Titegui?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. You know, I had a question to the panel the other day and asked them about public health, you know, being that they'd be the first building to be erected from this medical campus because of, you know, they're homeless at this point and the amount of money they spend for rental is quite substantial. And it was almost like jokingly amongst all of them when they were talking about it, that the importance of, yes, even Lillian Posadas from Guam Memorial Hospital realized the importance of having them go first. And I believe the next one in line would have been the hospital to start their construction on that. And then Guam Behavioral Wellness probably would be in the last. It was also reiterated during one of the task force meetings too, you know, that kind of process. But this bill does not recognize any kind of structure or process in the RFP to have one come before the other. It's actually wide open. And in the event that we find that Guam Behavioral Wellness could actually stay in their facility and expand and be more cost-efficient to do so, was discussed too, to stay within their own area. But the problem is, is the hospital facility and the importance of having patients nearby the hospital. It makes sense because currently, look where the Guam Behavioral Wellness is at today and how it was built in that area because of the hospital. But I don't see it coming in at a $100 million price tag to be put at the new facility in Manila because what you're looking at is just an area, a small area to incorporate beds for individuals or, you know, an area to process them. So the point is, what I'm trying to make is that this bill is actually wide open. It doesn't have any structure on what should be financed first. And I think that's an issue here, and it's very concerning. I mean, even though the panel and the task force said that they're going to do it this way and proceed that way, and it's a plan they put in place, I respect that and I've seen the work. I've gone to at least four task force, two with the main where they consolidated all the subcontract, sub-task force into one to discuss. And it's, the song is the same song. Public health, hospital, and then... But my concern, again, it's not reiterated in the bill. So if we can keep Guam Behavioral Wellness in its same location and just add extra beds in the hospital for them in another section, that might be an idea, but... Anyways, that was just a little insight, history of what I've heard from the task force. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually rise in support of this amendment. If you look at the pure intent of this amendment, it is to add a definition under Section 83102, which is titled definitions. And so for purposes of having a definition inserted into a document so that where that word appears, it is clearly defined, that is absolutely appropriate. And I think that this amendment does just that. It just puts in what a definition is into Section 83102 where that certain word would be mentioned in the context of the bill. So of course, anytime that you have a reference to a word in the context of a bill, you will go back to see under definitions what exactly that means. What does that mean? What does that include? So for that very, that very premise, for inserting a definition, this amendment is very appropriate and very necessary. So I rise in full support and I encourage my colleagues to think of it within that pure context that it's simply to add a definition where a definition is necessary for the whole entire bill for clarity purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Anyone else on this amendment? Speaker Tullai, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I think this amendment, you know, is well-intentioned that we're going to define some of the terms that are used in this bill that are actually right now. I think it actually highlights that, you know, there's, there's a lot that GITA was not able to interpret for us. They said they did not write this bill, and that is not clear in the bill. But for example, we, the bill has a definition of healthcare agency, which is GMH, Public Health, and Behavioral Health. And then it has, the amendment is to add a definition of healthcare facility, which shall mean GMH, Public Health, and Behavioral Health. I'm not sure if this and makes it, you know, only when they act together that there are healthcare facilities or we can treat these individually. I'm guessing it's meant to treat them individually in contrast to the next definition, which is 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence means GMH, Public Health, and Behavioral Health located as a whole in one property of the government of Guam. So I just think it's unclear, but if I looked up where in the bill this definition might impact, so where do they use this term, healthcare facilities, to see, you know, what we're clarifying in those places of the bill? And why we need a definition to be put in? So on page nine, line 21, they use the term healthcare facility. 21, when they say, "Should one healthcare facility study and proposal be ready in advance of the other, nothing in this section shall prohibit the selection of a contractor for said facility by the Healthcare Center of Excellence Committee." So they're, they seem to be using this when they want to separate them out and deal with them on a one-by-one basis, which is, I think, okay, we should actually be allowing that flexibility. I think they might find that that is very much more cost-efficient in instances to do that. But yeah, if you look at that sentence I just read, you know, the use of the term, "selection of a contractor for said facility", again, just makes me question the consistency of this bill where we, you know, I think we should be very clear that we are allowing individual facilities, individual RFPs, or whether or not. Because if you look at another section of the bill, okay, so also on page nine, the term healthcare facilities is used in line 25. And this is something that I raised with GITA yesterday. "The committee shall also specifically consider the contractor's ability and performance with regards to financing development and construction of healthcare facilities on Guam or in any similarly isolated locality." This line is limiting or trying to make a preference, it looks like, in the procurement process for a contractor who has a performance in the financing, development, and construction of healthcare facilities on Guam. So we use this new definition to interpret this. We're saying, you have to have had experience to build GMH, Public Health, We're saying you have to have had experience to build GMH, public health, Guam behavioral health to avail of this preference. And when I asked them yesterday which companies that was, they were not sure. They said they did not write this line. So I don't know. I think that really limits us because if you think of GMH, how long ago it was built, public health, behavioral health, I think, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily see the logic of making a preference for the companies that built those buildings so long ago, you know? Maybe if they wanted to just say, you know, experience in building healthcare facilities or designing healthcare facilities in particular versus, you know, designing a school or designing, you know, a legislative building or anything, an office building, that, you know, there are special requirements for healthcare facilities. But I don't think this definition used on this line is, is going to, it narrows, it very much narrows the selection process. And then again, on page 10, I only looked on pages nine and 10 for the terms healthcare facility. So on page 10, line five, they again say that the RFP shall, the GIDEA shall issue an RFP after the conclusion of its program study in consultation with healthcare agencies for the design, renovation, construction, maintenance of all healthcare facilities. And I guess that clarifies, it, um, it's, it may clarify, I'm not sure how it clarifies in this occasion either because healthcare facilities here, maybe that means that they can be separate. So maybe, maybe I like that because then it means that they can be, you know, there can be an RFP for each healthcare facility separately and that might be preferable when they, when they get more information. As opposed to, you know, the other definition that says the center of excellence has to be all of these healthcare facilities located as a whole in one property in the government of Guam. So I don't know. I hope, I hope this amendment will, you know, is going to clarify the bill, but I'm, I'm just not confident on that because I think that, well, I, I think the bill, the bill is still a little confusing as to that, the whole premise, you know? Is it mandating one RFP for the center of excellence or separate RFPs for each healthcare facility, you know, and, or that type of thing? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker July. Anyone else on this amendment? If not, okay, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I have, I guess, reservation about this definition because it states that the facilities of GMH, public health, and behavioral health. And so for me, when I, when I read this, I think about all the inventory of these three agencies. And if that was the intent, then, you know, what is that going to do to the cost? And, you know, looking at what was presented yesterday, we're already at a cost that we cannot afford. This bill proposes 35 million and yet the annual cost would be 60 million. So I don't know what the true impact of this will be to the cost. And so I just have reservations. Thank you.
Anyone else on this amendment? If not, Senators Augustine, you may close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment is for definition section. The bill talks about all three health agencies. All we did was identify healthcare facilities. As much as I've heard, there's many statements that were made by my colleagues that didn't germane to the definition issue that the amendment was about, but I just went on ahead and listened. My colleagues, it's all about definition. That's all this amendment is. You don't like the bill, you can vote it down at the end of the day, but this is only amendments about the definition. Let's stick to the amendments, please. Thank you. Thank you, and I ask for your support for this amendment to do the definition.
All right, are there any objections to the amendment? Objections to the amendment? There is an objection. All those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your hand. One more time, please, if you're in support of the amendment, signify by raising your hand. Amendment passes. Okay, we'll move on to the next amendment on your sheet. It should be number eight. AB 121. Senator Blas?
Mr. Chair, before we move, notwithstanding, and I recognize that there, there are a number of different amendments. In the interest of keeping it here, can I propose and suggest a different way of being able to tackle this in that we go page by page? Because some of these amendments, if we amend page 13, then it affects page nine. Whereas if we amend page nine, we may not have to worry about page 13. What I'm getting at, sir, is just so that we don't have to jump all over the, the bill here. And recognizing, yes, that, you know, there are a number of different amendments, but if we can deal with each amendment as we go through each page, I think that would be more, more efficient and less confusing for us. Just a suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
I would make that as a motion there, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion on the floor to go through the amendments in order as they appear on the pages, in order of the pages that they amend. Are there any objections to that motion?
Mr. Chair, you're asking for, that we go page by page versus it was by, the amendments were received in the order? I can understand that there may be a conflict where one will strike out the other. Let me just remind my colleagues, Mr. Chair, that I asked everybody yesterday, go over the amendments, understand what we're going to be going through today. Now, I'm going to object to that, to go page for page. We just go down and whoever submitted first just go through the process and we'll figure it out then. Because at the end of the day, there's really some that don't even care for the bill anyway, so we can move on.
Okay, there's been an objection. Senator Brown on the amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, excuse me, on the motion, you're recognized.
Yes, I mean, there are numerous amendments. I mean, in, I've never seen these many amendments for a single bill in my time. I think just so we have some sense of order and clarity because this is very confusing. I mean, we're literally almost rebuilding a bill here, which is, to this degree, is unusual. And I think to just have some sense of order, so as we have, instead of continuously having to go through these whole stack of, goodness, 20-something amendments, if we could at least go section by section in order as we normally do, even with the budget bill, as venomous as the budget bill is, we normally do that process. So there's some sense of order and clarity so we know things, at least in our mind, there's some order to it. But right now, jumping back and forth according to the order an amendment was, was introduced to me, I mean, I'm only the second oldest in terms of service in the legis, I've never seen this, at least in terms of my own mental process and also for the public that may be watching, it would be nice to have some sense of order. And at least if we go section by section, page by page, we can all be on the same page versus spending a few minutes here or there to figure out which amendment was next in line. And then how does that, how does that change everything else? Because, I mean, otherwise, I'd motion send this bill back to committee and put it in some kind of order that we have something to look for versus all these numerous amendments that we're asked to look at with regards to moving forward with this bill. I think it's going to be very time-consuming and in the end, I don't even know what, what sense all this is going to make. So I understand the sponsor of the bill has objected, but I just think to have some sense of order, if we went by page by page, section by section, I think for most of us, we'd have a better clarity of what it is we're doing because we are, this is a substantial change of all these amendments that are being made to this, this piece of legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Vice Speaker Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Masim, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, when the previous oversight chair of the committee of rules was sitting up there and he had asked for all the amendments to come in, it was noted as part of the rules of engagement that the amendments will be entertained on the process as it has come in and entered into, into the, uploaded in, into the drive, the Google Drive. And it was repeated on more than several occasions that at the end of the presentation by the agency heads that were here to present, that we will work on the amendments. And this has nothing to do about changing the bill completely. There are several members here who have their trumped amendments that came after the presentation was made. And it was again reiterated by the chair to make sure that your amendments came on time and that it would go accordingly. And to change that again will just be gone with going against the grain of how the rules of engagements were delineated in the first place. I'm not going to talk about the merits of changing this bill. I mean, everybody, all of us here in this room is entitled to put in amendments how we see fit. And everybody has that opportunity to see whether this bill can go back to committee or not. But when the presentation was done, in the beginning, in the middle, and right before the amendments were said, make sure you put in your amendments, make sure it's in the drive so every colleague can see, and make sure that you know that we will go on each amendment as the way it came in to be uploaded on the Google Drive. So I'm going to agree with the author of this bill that we take it the way the rules of engagements were delineated when we started the process for Bill 121.
All right, we're going to take a short recess. All right, we're back from recess. Senator Blas, did you have something on your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, after deliberation and the spirit of collegiality, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. The motion has been withdrawn. On the motion to withdraw, any objections? No objections? Motion withdrawn. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that Bill 121-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, with recommendation of this committee, of the whole, be set aside.
On the motion, any objections? No objections? Motion carries. Senator Sinagastin, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 99-36 LS, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file, and Bill 121-COR, as amended by the Committee on, the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, be set aside.
There's a motion, any objections? No objections? Motion carries. All right, we are in recess while we transition out of the Committee of the Whole.
Emina Trant, the Secretary of Justice in Guam is back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 99-36 LS, as amended by the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file, and Bill 121-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole is to be set aside.
We'll take that one by one. So, on the motion and the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to place Bill number 99-36 LS on the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to place Bill number 121-36-COR or to set it aside, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Colleagues, we are still in the second reading, and we will resume at 2:00 PM, er, I'm sorry. We'll take a one-minute recess.
You want me to make the mo?
Yes, okay, please. We're back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I motion that we, we move to recess until 2:00 PM.
On the motion to recess to 2:00 PM, we are hereby in recess until 2:00 PM.